So we have everyone here?
Looks like it.
Okay, well, we'll call the meeting to order. And Ginny, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justiciable, and justice for all.
Good roll call.
Councilmember Baker?
I'm here.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Retsch?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Mayor Duncan?
Here. We have a closed session meeting and we have no reportable action other than staff was given direction. Sean, on the public comment procedure, could you go over that? Or do we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. So on the agenda, we have the link to the town's YouTube page listed. So folks that are watching on Zoom can also watch on YouTube. I don't know why you'd want to do that, but you could if you wanted to. We're doing the meeting through Zoom tonight exclusively. We don't have our usual videographer, Ken Benedict, to run to videotape the meeting for us. So we're doing it all through Zoom. The link is on the agenda. Folks, if they want to have a public comment, will need these, the raise my hand feature. So in the webinar format, on the bottom of your screen, if you're watching, you would hit that raise my hand button. That'll raise your hand up so you can notify me that you want to make a public comment and then I'll unmute your microphone and turn you on. As you go through that, I'll announce that you've been, you know, unmuted, you're able to speak. If anybody is listening just through the phone, there is a way to also do public comment. If you're on the phone, you would do that by hitting star nine and that'll raise your hand and that will unmute you the same way that we would if you were using a laptop, a computer, a smartphone or whatever. So we'll go through agenda wise, each agenda item, open it up for public comment, do that same process. The mayor will announce public comment and I'll remind everybody to raise their hand if they do have a public comment. That's it.
Okay, now we have matters of interest to council members.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Actually, I know that there's a lot going on right now and I just wanted to find out where we might place a strategic planning somehow in the next few months, Sean. Maybe you could just let us know. And I, but I do know that there's a lot going on, but I think it would be important for us, especially since we have two new council members. It would be really cool. So, yeah.
So I'm anticipating doing it either in February or in March, depending on when we can get everybody together and schedules and all that. So it'll be either February or March. But we do need to do that. The last one was done in 2019. It needs to be updated for sure. So be looking for an email from Cricket to do that sooner or later.
Again, okay. Is there any other matters of interest from council? Seeing none, town manager report.
Yeah, so I have a couple of things to talk about. The report that I put together that was emailed out to council, we'll obviously put that on the website as well. We post that every meeting after the meeting. So I wrote this at three o'clock and because the COVID situation in Placer County and in the state changes literally almost hour by hour, the information and there is out of date already. So I'm going to go through what I wrote and then I'll clarify and say where we're at now. So in the report that you got, it talks about us being in the greater, the new regional approach that the state is set up on the regional stay at home orders. And so we were under a regional stay at home order as being part of the Sacramento region, which restricted a lot of businesses from being open completely or and then mandated folks work from home as much as possible. So that was actually lifted today. The governor announced that it was lifted at, I think, like 3:30, right after I got done and sent it to Cricket, of course, because that's how these things work. So we're not under the regional stay at home order at this point that's been lifted for the Sacramento region. We are still under the purple tier. And as part of the purple tier, there are things that businesses that can be open, businesses that can be closed. You can find that on the state's website. It's also listed on the county's website. And we'll be updating the town's COVID-19 response portion of our website this week to get all that kind of new information on there. So folks know what we're at with all that stuff. It's a long list, but like kind of the key ones for us, just off the top of my head are that restaurants are not supposed to be having indoor dining. It's supposed to be outdoor dining only, but you can't have outdoor dining under the purple tier. When we were under the regional stay at home order, you weren't supposed to do any kind of in-person dining at all. It's supposed to be all takeout. So restaurants are supposed to be outdoor dining only. Barber shops and hair salons are allowed to open again with specific controls and specific requirements being met. Obviously, wearing a mask when you're in public with folks is important, continuing to wash your hands and doing all the stuff that we've been talking about since this past March. On the town operations side, I wanted to let you know where we're at with that. So we switched over to a work from home model again last week. So we've been doing that for about a week, at least until the end of the stay at home order, which as I just said, ended today. So I'm not sure when we're going to be bringing folks back and having them work in the office the way that we were before. I will say that for members of the public, public counter is still open between nine and noon the way that it was before. Carol is working the front office to make sure that we're able to keep the building department running. Phones are still being answered. There might be delay in a response. If you've got, like, if you leave me a phone message, I come in once or so a day for most part of the day. But I also check them through my cellphone. So there shouldn't be any gap on what's the public's perception of what's happening, other than you won't see as many people in town hall. And then obviously, we're not having the in-person meetings, which we haven't really been doing since March anyway. So. Let's see, Public Works continues to work on rotating shifts and we're making sure that we only have one person per vehicle. So we're still continuing to respond to emergencies when they come up, doing all the maintenance stuff that they're doing, but they're on rotating shifts. The other reason we switched to the stay at home order or the work from home model for us is because, on the town hall side, is because if we have just one person get sick with COVID in the building, we're actually going to have to close the whole building down for, until we go through the quarantine period. Even though town hall is set up with separate offices and everybody wears a mask when they go into the common areas, if somebody, because the size of our building tests positive, then we're going to need to close. And that'll be obviously a concern for us. And so we want to make sure that we're able to stay open as much as possible. And even though we're only open nine to noon Monday through Thursday, we are still trying to accommodate public members, obviously, as much as we can. And so we don't want to have that negatively impacted. We talked a while ago about having a library open to in-person, having the public be allowed back into the building. We put that on hold. Once we got into the purple tier and then once we switched into the regional stay at home order, the library staff switched to working from home primarily. Now that we're out of that stay at home order, they're going to be back in the building. But we are going to keep the library closed until we get out of the purple tier and into the red tier. I'm not sure when that's going to happen for sure. But at this point, we can't really figure out a way to accommodate members of the public on the, when we're in that purple tier the way that we would like to. So we're just going to keep it closed. I have the Chamber Executive Director, Ryan DiMartini, or excuse me, the Chamber Commerce President, Ryan DiMartini is on. He's going to do the chamber update. And he'll be talking about the third round of the Placer Shares Grant that'll be coming up. So when we get to that section of the agenda, I'll kind of backfill anything on that. One thing I wanted to talk about though is continuing on and finishing up with the COVID stuff. The January Leadership Loomis Classes Meeting was specific about healthcare COVID-related stuff. And so we had a panel of local doctors, medical professionals speaking on that panel. That video, we recorded it. And so the video is posted on the Loomis Leadership's Facebook page. You can view that. There's a section that was with the healthcare panel and then also a separate section with the county, the county's health director, Rob Oldham. So you can find those on the Leadership Loomis Facebook page. That's on the, that's it on the COVID stuff. I can answer questions from council specifically about that if you have any, and then I'll keep on with the rest. You have any questions about that? Okay. Two other things I want to talk about. Costco, as you know, council approved the Costco Project Act in September. The town, the town's currently facing three separate lawsuits regarding that project. The suits continue to work themselves through the process and the town and Costco continue to look forward to vigorously defending the town's approval of the project. I can't talk about the litigation because it's litigation, but we are in the process of defending that and I'll leave it at that. And the last thing, Town Manager Tuesday event that I was doing pre-COVID and started back up and we were able to meet outside, put it on hiatus for the holiday season, but that's going to return this month. I'll be doing that the fourth Tuesday of the month. It's going to be through Zoom for the immediate future because of the weather. And so that's the fourth Tuesday of the month at nine o'clock. And I'll post where that Zoom link on the town's Facebook page and then also on the website when I, once I get it set up. So that'll be posted on Friday before the fourth Tuesday, which would be pulling my calendar here. That would be, I'll post it on the 22nd. And hopefully, we can get some folks to join that. That's all that I got. And can answer questions if you have any.
Any questions for Sean? Okay.
So then we'll want to open it up for public comment. If anybody has public comment, there is one person who's listening in on the phone. So if you're on the phone and you wanted to have a public comment, you'll need to do the raise my hand feature, hitting star nine. If you have a public comment, if you're on the actual Zoom livestream, then you'll just hit the raise my hand button on the bottom. So we have David Ring. David, you're turned on.
Is this for, is this for items not on the agenda or just a question for you?
It'd be, this would be specific for the town manager report.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So I had a couple of people ask me about the WW molding site. Have we, is there any update on that?
I need to release the RFP for that and to look at whether or not the town is going to be selling that property or again. So once I get that RFP drafted, I'll bring it back to council and have that RFP blessed and then sent out.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing any other questions, Sean?
We have, hang on for one sec. Looks like that's it. Miguel, I thought had his hand raised. Yeah, Miguel does have his hand raised. All right, Miguel, go ahead. You need to unmute yourself though, please.
I lowered my hand. I have a question, but not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you see any other?
Yeah, it looks like it's it.
Okay. We'll go to the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. Ryan DiMartini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like Sean said a little bit ago, Placer County is releasing the third round of the Placer Shares Grant. This is going to be a fund for Loomis and the surrounding area, which will encompass Penrin and Newcastle. So businesses that can apply do not have to be in the city limits of Loomis or any of those towns. They can be in the surrounding area. Grants will be for up to $5,000 and they're meant to be used for helping with rent as well as utilities. Application will come out shortly. We're currently applying for and working on getting those funds directed towards us so we can start handing them out as soon as possible. If people are interested, then they can reach out directly to the chamber and we'll be able to give them more information as it comes along. So, thank you.
Ryan, is there an application deadline for those grants? Maybe?
There, there will be. The funds, well, the application deadline for the chamber to actually submit to Placer County isn't until the 22nd of this month. So we don't expect funding to actually start or applications to be out until around that time. So I would expect applications to be available come next week. And then we'll give more information as we get it.
Okay. All right, thank you. If there's no other questions from council? Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to public comment for items not on the agenda.
So if you would like to, if you have a public comment, you'll need to hit the raise my hand button on the webinar through Zoom, or if you're on the phone, you'll hit star nine to raise your hand. So we have one. All right, David, you're turned on.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if it's just me, but I lost the video to pretty much everybody. Like, I can see my name right now, but I lost the video to everybody else. I don't know if anybody else is having that problem. But that's it.
Okay, then. That was David's statement. So any other public comment, Sean?
Doesn't look at it or doesn't look like it.
Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll go on to adoption of the agenda.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Retsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye. Okay, so now moving along to opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. Any comments on the consent calendar?
We have one public comment if council doesn't have any questions. All right.
All right.
So we'll switch over to public comment if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
David Ring?
Yeah, sorry, I feel like I'm talking a lot. I wanted to pull items four and six, please. On the consent agendas, this is the time to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So.
So council could entertain a motion to approve one, two, three, five, seven, eight and nine.
I'll make a motion to approve one, two, three, five, seven, eight, nine.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember?
You're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Retsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye.
All right, so. David, go ahead with your questions on four and six.
Both at the same time?
Probably do four first.
Okay. So last month, I brought up the idea of moving the town investments in ExxonMobil into something else. I wanted to point out that about a week after I made that, that I brought that up, Calsters, which is the California, it's one of the California state retirement pensions. They actually were talking about doing something similar. And I wondered if the council members had any, had time to think about that, if they had any ideas about it. If, I mean, a, a no, we don't want to do it is fine as long as I understand that you have heard me is really all I really want to know. But if, it would be great if we could, in my opinion, it would be great if we could get our money out of Exxon and put it in something else. Thanks.
Yeah. It was my understanding, David, that Roger was going to check into that. So. I suppose Roger did check into it or he's?
I'm here if you want to hear me.
Yes, I do.
So, yeah, it's, no, I looked at Exxon and I've checked with other, some of my other agencies and it fits nicely in our portfolio and I have no intention of selling it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then do you want to, David, do you want to go ahead with number six, your question on number six?
Yeah, so I, for number six, I just had a question about the resolution. Is this, is this a new resolution or is it an updated one? And I was wondering if it's a, if it's a new one. I was just wondering, is there something that caused us to require this? I mean, was there something that we, that happened that made us need to have to deal with tickets that were being donated to town?
Okay, that's, that's mine here. This is a new policy and FPPC requires this. You know, I don't know if you read the staff report, but there are times that council may get an invitation to go somewhere and they do, it's an honorary position to get to somebody or something. And a council member shouldn't have to pay, you know, put that in their 700 form. With this policy, it would be through another form that we post on site showing that they were invited to an event and it was paid for. So it's just, instead of putting the amount of things, if they get a gift or tickets or anything like this, instead of a 700 form, it's an 802 form that they file. And that's basically it. And it's a policy that FPPC has put out there for cities to do.
Okay, so it's a new policy, but it's something that we're, it's not something that the town just got a bunch of tickets and we have to now implement this policy so we can deal with it. It's just something that it's been going on and we just need to take care of it in a better way.
You're, you're on mute.
Sorry, you're right, exactly. And this, this just, and what it does is we have to post it online and keep up with it if that happens. It's not like we get tickets that often, but it does happen occasionally.
I, this didn't seem like it. I just thought it was weird that, because I'd never seen something like this, at least that I can remember on the town agenda. And I thought if, I just, it was just weird. It's just not a deal. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Cricket, thanks David. So now we need a motion for items four and six.
I'll make a motion to pass four and six.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Was that Baker that said second?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, it was.
Councilmember Clark Retsch?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I actually skipped over a public comment that Miguel had his hand raised under public comment. So I'd like to allow him to provide that public comment really quickly.
Okay, yes, please.
All right, Miguel, go ahead. You need to unmute yourself.
Okay, good, thank you. Two, two items. One, Boynton Road, there's about 500 feet that needs to be paved. There's two types of paving that Auburn and Placer County use. One's kind of expensive and the other one's quite reasonable. It's a quarter of the cost. And I would like to have the council just get that street paved. It's been years and for some reason, it never gets paved and it's a real problem bouncing over that thing. So I'd like them to consider that. The second thing is that though pedestrian crossing lights downtown don't work, I think that's a real safety hazard. I was there today, lady pushed the lights and her and her kids started walking across. Those lights don't come on. So I think somebody needs to fix them or do something. Thank you.
Thanks, Miguel. Yeah, that is a concern about the lights. So, all right.
Well, we'll take a look. We'll have Public Works or the town engineer take a look.
Okay, so now it's time for business, right? And we have on our business, item 10 is Placer County Sheriff's Office. And Lieutenant Brian Silva is going to give us a presentation. Okay, Brian?
I'd like to say. I was asked to give some statistics on the crime in Loomis. But before I get into that, I'd like to comment briefly on some of the civil unrest that we've seen recently, especially back at our country's capital in Washington, DC. And some of the organizations that were responsible for that. I was asked specifically if we had any, any cells or chapters of QAnon or the Proud Boys in Placer County. And I reached out to our special operations unit and they are unaware of any cells or chapters in Placer County. And when it deals with, with some of the civil unrest, the primary center for that is probably going to be Sacramento. I am unaware of any planned protest for Placer County. The FBI just recently announced a warning for all state capitals that there might be armed protest. Again, that, that would be down in Sacramento and not in Placer County. We are working with our law enforcement partners to identify any of these planned protests. And if they were to arise, I would, I would be informed. With that being said, I just want to kind of start with a broad view of the crime report. And I compared, can be comparing to 2019. In regards to total calls for service, we were down 3% for 2020. And arrests and citations was down 6%. Reports taken, down 13%. Traffic accidents were down 20%. Total citizen calls for service, down 7%. Citizen calls that required patrol response was down 7%. Priority one, citizen calls for service was up 8%. And that is from 65 calls in 2019 to 70 calls in 2020 of priority ones. Total officer initiated calls for service was up from 1590 to 1624, an increase of 2%. And traffic stops were down 4%, down from 623 to 596. I wanted to address some of the perceptions regarding an uptick in property crime, especially towards the end of the year in 2020. So I did a comparison for September through December, looking at the numbers from 2019 to 2020. In regards to property crime, which includes burglary thefts, mail thefts and that, and crimes of that type. For September, we were up by two. It went from 10 calls or 10 calls for service in 2019 to 12. In October, we had, in 2019, we had 13 calls for service and that went down nine, down to nine. So minus four for October. November, in 2019, we had 15. And in 2020, we had 19, positive of four calls. In December 2019, we had 11. And in December 2020, we had 18, a positive of seven. So overall, comparing those numbers across the board for those four months, 49 calls in 2019 and 58 calls in 2020. But what are the reasons for that? It's not uncommon to see an uptick in property crime towards the holidays as people start ordering and having items delivered to their home. Mail thefts increased. Property, you know, gets. Mail thefts increased, property, you know, gets stolen. And, and things of that nature. Also, you know, we're in unprecedented times with dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and, and some people are unemployed. And possibly, I'm merely speculating that they're possibly seeking an opportunity to to take items that don't belong to them. Another possible factor is we have been under restraints in our jails. And, and taking people into custody and taking them to jail has greatly impacted how we do business. Because we're dealing with the pandemic as well inside our custody facilities. As recently as today, a directive was sent out to our law enforcement partners to, to issue citations in the field rather than take people to jail because of the overcrowding and the procedures that need to take place inside our custody facilities, make sure that the inmates are safe. With that being said, I weren't happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Okay, anyone have any questions from council?
I don't really have a question, I have just a comment maybe. I, I've heard that, you know, people should just really check their mail daily and not leave anything in there. And I think with stimulus checks maybe possibly coming, I just would just say that in openness that check your mail and pull your mail in because that seems like a time they might be looking to steal mail. That's all.
And I would agree with that 100%. Please check your mailboxes often, daily if you can. If you want the best, probably the safest way, get a P.O. box. That's, that's probably the safest way if you have a mailbox that's open to the public. Another alternative would be getting a locking mailbox where the mail slot just, you could drop it through there, but you can't access it after it's dropped, that's another alternative.
Okay, so seeing no more council questions or comments, open, open up to the public, please. John, you're on mute.
So if you're a member of the public looking to provide public comment, you'll need to hit the raise my hand button. And if you're on the phone, you'll hit star 9 to provide public comment. It says somebody raised their hand, but it went away.
I saw Miguel.
No, it doesn't look like. Yeah, it doesn't look like we have any public comment, but there we go, hang on. All right, Miguel, you're turned on there, go ahead.
Hey, thanks Jenny, you're the only one looking at the screen, I appreciate it. Just, just a question, do we still have the traffic officer?
Yes, sir. Eric Kinsey is still a traffic officer.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comment?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, well, I think safety and security of your home place is real important, lock your doors and lock your cars. I appreciate your presentation and thank you Lieutenant Brian Silva. And we'll see you soon. Appreciate your officers and, and your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Okay, moving on to the general plan update committee assignments.
This will be Mary Beth.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. What I have for you tonight is an extension of committee assignments. We were originally scheduled to have you do your additional committee selections tonight. But we realized that's a real daunting task. We had a total of 59 applications, two of them withdrew, so you have a list of 57 people that are interested in multiple committees. So I know that's really hard, we had the holidays and all of that, so staff's recommendation is to continue this matter to your next meeting where you can make all of the additional committee assignments. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yes, so I think it would be important too for the public to understand how many committees we're going to be talking about and if maybe you could clarify that for us, Mary Beth?
Certainly, what we have, I don't have them numbered out, but we've already selected the housing committee. In addition to that, we have circulation, environmental justice, land use with an, land use has an additional six subcommittees. So now we're up to eight. Number nine is public services and facilities. Then we have conservation of resources, which is four individual committees under that one umbrella. And public health and safety, which has two committees tied to that. So I think we're up to 11 total committees. And on the land use committee, because there's six additional subcommittees, you would have your land use committee and staff's recommendation is to choose a chairman and vice chairman for that committee. That would be for all of the land use and sub land use committees. And then each committee would then have its five or seven people members with that, which includes the auxiliary members. So a total of 11 committees total and up to seven people per committee.
Okay. Is there any?
Yeah, a total of 16 total committees, including housing, so.
Okay, is there any other comments from council? Questions? Okay, seeing none. Okay, thanks, Mary Beth, I guess we need to.
You open it up for public comment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thanks Sean, open it up for public comment.
Doesn't look like we have any comment, public comment.
I see something on chat from, oh.
Yeah, so there was a chat message sent from Sonia Coupler saying the label of the YouTube and Zoom meetings is incorrect, they should be January 12th, not January 14th. Also Danny's last name is spelled incorrectly, it should be Cartwright with a W, not with the star. So I don't set up Danny's Zoom thing, Danny's set up his own Zoom thing. The YouTube and Zoom meeting, I can fix those on the, the recording once it's done, I think. Thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it.
Okay, still no public comment, okay, so let's get a motion in a second, please.
Motion to continue to the February 9th, 2021 meeting.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second.
Member Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Member Nisley?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye. Okay, the next item is the mayor's committee appointments. And I'm sure there's no problems with this, right?
We're going to make it hard on you for your first meeting.
Yeah. All right, well, let's, is there any comments on your committee assignments? Everybody's ready to get to work, huh? Okay, let's have a public comment then.
Doesn't look like there's any public comment on that item.
Okay, very good.
Miguel, Miguel had his hand up again.
Okay. Good job, Jenny.
It was up for a second and then it went down.
Yeah, you might, Sean, you might suggest that people leave their hand up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because just putting it up for a second is difficult to keep track of.
Right. Miguel, you're able, you're, you're turned on.
Do you hear me?
Yes, yep.
No, I kept my hand up and you say every time, there's no comment, so if it wasn't for Jenny, I never get a chance here. On the, on the committee appointments, having served on most of them, I think there needs to be some direction, at least an agreement on what the person that's sitting on that committee is charged to do. I mean, you have Transportation Commission, you have SECOG. And there's no consensus that what, what they're doing representing the town of Loomis or how they're representing the town of Loomis. Some other communities have kind of a meeting and they say, well, these are the main priorities that we'd like to see you pursue on those various committees. And I would suggest that Loomis does the same thing.
So. I'm not clear, are you talking about during a council meeting, having an open discussion regarding who to appoint to the committees? And what we want them to do for the town at those committees? Is that what you're saying?
Well, not disagreeing with who is appointed, that's fine. I'm just saying that somebody represents the town of Loomis on SECOG. What are they trying to get for Loomis from SECOG? Are they trying to get funding up? No. Are they about development or the various things that SECOG does? Or the same thing with Plaster County Transportation Authority? Are they trying to get projects in Loomis? Or do they agree with the sales tax? You know, there's, there's certain items that come up. And basically, what it's been is, is just the, the individual councilperson's opinion of how they feel it should be done. So I think what I'd like to see is just some general agreement or here's some specific goals we'd like to see accomplished on these various committees. Now, and some of them, like the power committee, the one you're on Jeff, you know, there's not really a lot to say, same thing with flood control. But some of the other ones have a direct bearing on the town of Loomis. And there's no direction given to the individual committee members, how they should vote or not vote.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're talking about. And that is something that we probably should talk a little bit more about, I'm not sure about the forum. Sean, do you have any input on your past experience at other cities you worked for?
Yeah, the, I mean, the other two cities that I've been in, it was, well, there's two ways to do it. Either the, the member of the committee sort of has the ability to make decisions on the agenda issues as they see fit to benefit the town. Obviously, everything that we do is, as a committee member, you should be looking to benefit the town overall. But then the other way to do it is also to have some sort of like a legislative or like a legislative platform and have that tied back to the decisions that you're making as a, as a committee member. We could, the best way to talk about that, I think, would be through the strategic planning stuff. And we, the council, at that point, can kind of get everybody all on the same page, move in the same direction, row the boat the same way, whatever euphemism you want to use. But that, that's the best form to do that, I think.
I, I agree, I think that's a good idea for the strategic plan when we meet in February or March, we could talk about this.
Right, right. We also have another person whose hand is staying up, that'd be David Ring. All right, David, go ahead.
Mine is just a procedural comment, so when, I'm watching it on Zoom because my video's not working. I mean, I'm watching it on YouTube because my video's not working on Zoom. And by the time that you say on YouTube, is, is the time that you're giving for comments, you've already lost it on Zoom. And so you're, you're cutting off comments before you even finishing on YouTube. I just wanted to point that out, maybe wait another 15 seconds, maybe, up to you. All right, that's it, thanks.
Okay, there's an obvious lag time in, between YouTube and Zoom then, I guess. So, yeah, take that into consideration for, hopefully this won't last too much longer in our meeting lives, so. So right now, since we have some committee assignments, we have two new members that won't have committee reports yet, and I don't think anyone else has met with PCTPA, right, Brian?
We have had a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, probably the only thing that comes from that is Cricket's looking at us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to have a motion, I'm sorry.
Okay. Need a motion for.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation for our regional committee assignments for 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Hey, councilmember Clark Cretz?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisley?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye. Okay, so back to you, Brian, for the PCTPA report.
Probably the only thing of note is the town of Loomis, or I will be serving, since I'm still on that committee, as the vice chair of that committee.
Very good.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
Okay, there's no others, everyone is aware that Pioneer is in, and talks about an expansion into Eldorado County, I'm sure, yeah, it's been, I believe it's been on the news, I spoke to it earlier a couple of months ago, so that's about it for me as far as my committee. So seeing no other committees, no one else have anything else to say at this time? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all, good night.
All right, take care, everyone.